For their attendance this evening, look forward to a good meeting and recognizing a lot of wonderful people out in the audience today. We will start with the invocation by Rabbi Israel Zuberman, Congregation Beth Shalom. Come forward with the invocation. If everyone would stand for the invocation, and after the invocation, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Rabbi, so glad to have you here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. Good to be here. Our one shared God of life's precious blessings who brings us together in a precarious world to be one family gratefully united and gloriously diverse, providing for America's greatness. Dear Mayor Sessoms, Council members, staff, and all fellow citizens, these troubling and unsettling times at home and abroad, may we be guided by the unfailing divine compass of compassion, caring, and concern for all fashioned in the Creator's sacred image. May we ever be mindful that God's divinity and human dignity are inseparable, that indeed we are our brothers and sisters' keepers. Acknowledging the gifts that are ours to treasure in beloved Virginia Beach, may we yet turn hatred into love, pain into promise, and sorrow into joy through the peace of shalom's holy offerings of healing, hope, and harmony. Let us say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Rabbi, again, thank you for coming down. Always good to have you. We have the roll call.
Yes, Your Honor.
Do you have a motion for the certification of the closed session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By vote of eleven to zero, you have approved this closed session to be in accordance with a motion to reset.
I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the informal formal session of August 2nd, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of ten to zero, with Mr. Moss abstaining, you have approved the minutes.
Well, Council is...
Can I explain my abstention if I could?
Please.
My visit in Florida was extended because my mother broke her hip while she was with us, and I had to stay with her until the surgery was over, we could get her back home. That's why I was absent that August 2nd.
And we're glad she's made a good recovery.
She has. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You really are. Council, it is... I cannot believe that it's getting towards the end of the summer, and a sign of the end of the summer is when King Neptune in his court comes to Virginia Beach, uh, comes to Council. And so at this time, I'd like to ask someone that used to hang around here a lot, James K. Spoor in his court, and David C. Burton, Chair of the Neptune Festival, to come forward, please. David, how are you? We welcome you.
Thank you. Mayor Sessoms, Vice Mayor Jones, members of the Council, thank you all for letting us be here today. It's my, as you said, my name is David Burton, and I'm a lawyer with Williams &amp; Mullen. It's my pleasure to be the Celebration Chair this year and introduce this great court to you. First of all, we do want to thank the city on behalf of the Neptune Festival for everything the city does for the festival and its support. It means very much to us. Second, we are a 501(c)(3) corporation. We spend the time celebrating the city, bringing people in to the city to help celebrate it, and we look forward to seeing all of you at Boardwalk Weekend as we help celebrate this great city. First of all, let me go ahead and start introducing the court.
Please.
I'm going to start with the princesses. Alexandra Benedetto. Kyler G. Collin. Tessa E. Dimmeras. Margaret A. Yur. Angela N. Jurasi. Elizabeth H. Gilde. Georgia K. Jackson. Tara L. Midget. Ashley M. Petchok. Madison H. Rayner. Madeline C. Ryan. Isabel C. Smith. And Kendall E. White. Who did I forget? All right, cool. I thought I read them down straight. I apologize. Haley Krieger. Yep, sorry. Sorry, Haley. All right, now, to introduce the Triton. First, we have Brian Carson, CFO of Gold Key PR. Christopher Chope, Vice President of Sustainability, Virginia Port Authority. Hunter DeRoe, III, CEO of ABS Technology. Justin Fulton, Principal with Signature Wealth Family Advisors. Victor Lewis, III, a partner with Chesapeake Radiologists. Patrick Schuler, a partner with Dixon Hughes Goodman. Anthony Vatone, Vice President of Swimways. Jesse Waltz, CEO of JES Foundation Repair. And this year, we had to cast the net pretty far. We found an unknown, but I'm proud to introduce you two, King Neptune the 43rd, James K. Spoor, and Lady Jones.
This is a little surreal, actually.
It really is kind of weird.
Well, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Vice Mayor, Council members, Counselor, Madam Clerk, Mr. Manager, it's a real honor to be here tonight and to wish you a good evening and to tell you a little bit about the Neptune Festival. Let me put on my specs here. There's one thing I can tell you for sure about this: Being king beats the heck out of being city manager. You know, for 24 years, I worked really closely with the Neptune Festival and was one of the city's liaisons with the festival, so I've had a lot of experience with the staff, with the festival itself, with the events, and so on. And it's really been a great experience, and it was something that I really enjoyed when I was here with the city all those years. But I'll tell you, being part of the court and seeing the festival from a different perspective has been a real eye-opener for me. We have a wonderful court. It's been an absolute joy since April, when I was selected to be the king, to get to meet some really great people that really care about our city as deeply as we all do. As you all know, the Neptune Festival is the official community celebration of Virginia Beach, and I want to recognize some of the Council members. I want to recognize Councilmember Earn, Councilmember Wood, Councilmember Davenport, all having been court members. I'm thinking of Tom Wilson. And I want to especially recognize the mayor as King Neptune the 24th, which was in 1997. And that's got to be quite a long time ago, Mayor.
Thanks for reminding.
This is the festival's 43rd year. We're consistently ranked as one of the top 10 festivals in the eastern part of the United States. We're the largest event of our kind in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Over the years, the festival has created a lot of great things that have been spun off from the festival itself and are things that our community enjoys. Some examples: The American Music Festival, beach events, remember Ocean Occasions when that was the precursor to beach events, Town Center Entertainment Program, the International Sand Sculpting Championship, which really is a premier invitation-only event for artists from around the world. And this year, we have 22 artists coming from 11 countries. They're the largest purse prize of any contest of its type in the Western Hemisphere. The Summer Concert Series, some of you may enjoy that, 31st Street Park, and the festival created and funded the iconic Neptune statue at 31st Street. And I know, if you're like me, I've never been down there where somebody wasn't getting their picture taken in front of that statue.
That's for sure.
So it really is a symbol for our community that we're all very proud of. In short, Neptune is a nonprofit, community-based organization dedicated to the sole purpose of supporting and celebrating our wonderful city. We couldn't do it without the generosity and the time of hundreds of volunteers and sponsors. You know, did you know that the Neptune partners with and supports numerous charities in our city? I'll mention a few of them: CHKD at Princess Anne, the Police Foundation, the Achievable Dream Academy, Aqua Kids, Toby's Dream, Virginia Musical Theater, the Governor's School for the Arts, various service clubs and projects throughout the city. So it's a great organization. I'd like to invite everyone to a few of our upcoming events. We've got a lot of things planned. The 27th of August, the Craft Beer Festival, 31st Street. 7th of September is a senior gala at the Convention Center. The 18th of September is the Fall Wine Festival. 23rd of September, the End of Summer Party, and then the Big Weekend, Neptune Boardwalk Weekend, which is September 29th through October 2nd, including the Community Parade. See, Priscilla here makes me think of the parade. If I could, I'd like to present each of you with a commemorative Neptune coin. And just bring you good luck.
Jim Spoor giving away money.
Yeah, that's a first.
It's not real.
Thank you so much.
The last one gave us several, Jim. Thank you, sir.
Watch it cuts.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Wish you well.
Thank you. Congratulations again.
Thank you, King.
Hello, King. How are you? Thank you.
Well, in closing, as I said, Neptune is about celebrating our great community. It's really an event that's open to everyone. It's a movement that's open to everyone. It's one of the things I really love about the Neptune Festival. It's for the whole community. I'd like to thank the Council for your ongoing support and partnership with us over the last 43 years, and I'd like to just recognize and thank you for your public service and all you do for the community. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing some of you, if not all of you, at one of those events that I mentioned. So thank you for having us.
Well, King, I have to speak on behalf of the entire Council, congratulating you on being king. I don't think there's anyone that deserves it any more than you. I am looking behind you and seeing Lady Joan, and it's so good to have her here, and she is part of the festival, a huge part of it, by the support that she gives you and the festival all these years. But we're really looking forward to a great, great event, and we're going to have a lot of fun. You've got a wonderful court, and as I said, it's hard to believe that it's that time of year where the Neptune Festival is getting ready to take off and have a lot of fun. King, I would ask that you would stand by for just a few minutes. We've got another special presentation. I'd like you to award some young people some coins that they brought. These are your coins. I called a little while ago, and they sent them up here, but if you could stand by. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming down. We really appreciate it very much. The, you know, we're sitting back watching the Olympics, ladies and gentlemen. The Olympics have been just great, haven't they? But let me tell you, we've had a Little League baseball team that's just been downright awesome, and the Green Run Little League, if the members of the team could come forward, please, with the coaches, and Priscilla Beatty, she could come too. But come on.
I love Priscilla. She's great.
We've got to get this great team around you, Priscilla. And like I said, you know, we have great athletes in this city. Imagine, some of them are being represented right now in the Olympics, if you think about it. And now, we also have the Green Run Little League to thank. And I'd like to read this, if I may. Whereas the Green Run Little League was founded in 1975, Priscilla Beatty, the Assistant District Administrator for the Softball Programs, founded this Little League and served as their coach until the mid-1990s. She was the first and only woman ever appointed to the softball program in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Priscilla was also chosen to throw out the first ball when the pony league field was dedicated at Kempstrel in Wichita Rose. The league has continued to excel in competition these many years. Whereas recently, 13 boys were selected from their original teams for the GRLL. This all-star team of 13 competed in Dolphins District Championship against five other districts. They were the only undefeated team. Whereas this 13-member team is composed of Virginia Beach youth citizens who will attend our own Kellum, Lanstown, and Salem High Schools in the fall of 2016. They are Max Missy, Michael Bartels, Jonathan Blovins, Connor Caposey, Donald Dungy, Jackson Epperson, Josh Freeman, PJ Horn, Scott Hocker, Zach Nutson, Grant Melanick, Christian Rodriguez, and Zach Shaw. Their coaches are Scott Freeman, Chuck Horn, and George Melanick. Whereas they advanced to the state championship in Pound, Virginia, where they competed in a double-elimination tournament against 13 other district champions. Again, they were the only undefeated team, and they earned the cherished title of state champions. And whereas the Green Run Little League team will now advance to the regional tournament in Greenville, South Carolina, where they will compete against six other state championship teams from the southeast region. Winning that competition, they will advance to the Junior Little League World Series in Michigan. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Virginia Beach City Council pauses in its deliberations this 16th day of August 2016 to recognize these star athletes and Virginia Beach champions for their talent, skill, tenacity, and leadership in the field of sports to become our city's professional leaders of tomorrow. Be it further resolved that all 450,000 citizens in the best city in the world join us in declaring August 16th, 2016, Green Run Little League of 13 Day. And we want to do that. And I am going to ask King Neptune to give a coin to every one of the... I found out he was coming, so I called, and they were able to bring coins to share with the team. I'd love to present this to the team, and Priscilla, I'd like you to have one as well. And we're going to have it taken to you.
Thank you so much.
But we're very proud of this wonderful...
Do you remember, we had a baseball player, David Robinson, who went to the Naval Academy, grew seven foot two, and he went to the Olympics three times.
Yep. We've had a lot of superstars.
And they won. Every time they went, they won the game.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Priscilla. Coach?
Oh, yes. Mayor Sessoms, the kid's got a ball for you.
Oh, this will be kept in the mayor's office.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I hope that you all have seen through what has occurred by the support of the community when you came home. I was out of town, but I know that Shannon and others were there to give a welcoming to you, along with people in the community. So we want you to know how proud we are of each and every one of you. And to the coaches, the adults involved, thank you. I mean, this is what makes this city what it is, truly the greatest city in the world, because of you helping these wonderful young people achieve great things. And Priscilla, thanks for getting it off the ground, young lady. Thank you all. Okay, the next thing, another special, the United Way presentation. Kurt, 2016 Campaign Chair, and Judy Morgan. We welcome you.
Thank you. I'm Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Kurt Hoeflick. By day, I'm the President of Centera North and General Hospital. This evening, I'm here as a volunteer for the United Way, and I'm here on behalf of a very grateful community to say thank you. I'd especially like to thank some of our city employees who have worked so earnestly with United Way over the past year and looking forward into the upcoming campaign year. Ms. Regina Hilliard, who represents the city on our South Side United Way Campaign Council. Michelle Bailey Pittman, who's with us today, as well as Ellen Burns, who's with us today, who co-chair your local campaign committee here.
And they do a great job.
They do a wonderful job.
And we thank you.
And also, you know, the leadership support that we've received from the city, your leadership, the mayor and the manager, for being incredible forward leaders in this campaign. We count on employees of the city to keep us safe, to help us in times of trouble, to build our roads, and we appreciate our city employees for contributing to the quality of life for all of us in the region. But your employees have gone way beyond that. Last year, the city of Virginia Beach employees contributed $230,000 to the United Way. And over the past five years, they've contributed over $1.3 million to benefit this community. This means a lot to the people who have counted on all of you to keep them safe, to keep them out of trouble during tough times, and we just wanted to come and let you know, you have not let us down, you've not let the community down. We're very proud of the accomplishments of the city employees. And so on behalf of the community, thank you and thank your leadership for wonderful support.
And what I...
I have this wonderful certificate for you.
Okay, I'll take that.
Will you take that?
I'd like to give it to the ladies, though, if I may.
Sure.
And Council, I have the pleasure of going to the luncheon for recognition every year. And I want you to know, during this recession, you know, the last seven or eight years, we have hung right in that $250,000 a year type range, and I could not be more proud, you know, because, you know, it's been tough times for city employees during that same time period, and they've still stepped up and helped other people who needed help in our community. So please pass on, not just from the mayor, but from the entire city council, how proud we are that we have employees that go that extra step to really do great things for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any speakers on the public hearing for the change of the Creeds precinct?
No, Your Honor.
The utility easement?
Oh, I'm sorry. Barbara Messner wants to speak on that.
Excuse me?
Barbara Messner wants to speak on the precinct.
Okay, well, hold on. How about the utility easement?
No, sir.
Excess city property 29... Okay. Barbara, you want to speak on the change of the precinct polling site? Please come forward.
I'm going to hop that quickly.
Come on now. You know I am quick.
This was advertised as an actual council meeting, not a Neptune party. Sorry. You know, I used to attend the Neptune Festival when it was, when there was parking for all of us. Okay, on the polling stations, I didn't have time to read the 435 pages. I just got the regular agenda. But are there plans to change both the Creeds and the Red Wing Oceana polling stations for this November? What is the... What are you doing? I'd like to ask Ms. Henley or Mr. Moss if you're aware, if you've, you know, looked over the package from Friday, and if you could explain if you're planning to make any changes, because I do live in the Red Wing Oceana area, and I want to know if you plan to make any changes.
Barbara, as you know, you're not trying to cut off Mr. Moss.
I wouldn't answer.
Okay, this is a public hearing for you to state your views. We'll be voting on the changes that are being required in a few months.
I asked specifically what they were because they weren't on the Agenda B. Can anyone answer that? Can you, Mr. Sessoms?
It's right in here.
I know.
And I'm going to hand it to you. How's that sound?
No, I don't want it handed to me. I just ask if there are changes are for this November. Will there be polling changes for this November?
Yes. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Everybody will get postcards.
Okay, now we'll move to the consent agenda there. Mr. Vice Mayor, you all will notice we had to pull some things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The mayor would like to move for approval on the consent agenda. First item, J. 3, which is ordinance to amend Section 2-459 of the City Code pertaining to the Human Rights Commission. Four, resolution to change the name and membership of the Open Space Advisory Committee. Five, resolution to establish an online home sharing economy ad hoc committee as amended. And clerk would please note that Ms. Henley is voting no on that item. Item Six is ordinance to authorize a utility easement over a portion of the city's Lake Gaston Pipeline to Greenville County Water and Sewer Authority and declare in such easement to be in excess of the city's needs. Item Seven, ordinance to... Ordinance declaring an excess city property at 2908 North Lynn Haven Road and authorizing the city manager to execute all disposition and exchange documents with Lynn Haven Shopping Center LLC. Item Eight, ordinance to authorize a temporary encroachment into a portion of city property known as Sand Broad Inlet at 2805 Wood Duck Drive, District 7, Princess Anne. Item Nine, A, which is an ordinance to accept and appropriate additional fiscal year 2017 grant funds for the Community Corrections and Pre-Tile Program.
I open a public hearing for planning.
Under planning, item K. 1, which is the Traditional Concepts LLC, Victory Baptist Church of Virginia Beach, Inc., that's for indefinite deferral. And if the clerk would please note, Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item. Item Two, which is the application of Aldi LLC, 35 Ministries, Inc., that's also for indefinite deferral. And clerk would please note, Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item, and I'm also abstaining on that item. Item Three is the application of direct independence, and that's for deferral at the request of the applicant. And clerk would please note that Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item. I'm sorry, I stated that incorrectly. That's being deferred because of an error in the write-up on that item. Item Four, which is application of MMR Associates LLC for conditional change of zoning from AG 2 Agricultural District to Conditional B 2 at 596 Prince Anne Road, Ray Storey, Princess Anne. Item Five for approval is Tisha Harrison Royalty Salon Baxter Road LLC and Kempstrel District, and Mayor Sessoms is abstaining on that item, Madam Clerk. Item Six is the application of Cheryl McIntosh Christian Church Uniting in the Centerville District for approval. Item Seven is being pulled.
Correct.
Item Eight is the application of DeVries Corner LLC in the Bayside District for approval. So moved, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Also, for the record, Mr. Davenport will be abstaining on item Seven. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor.
I have a motion, and a second. Is there any discussion on the consent? Call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to zero, you have adopted the consent agenda as read with the abstentions of the mayor on K. 1, 2, 3, and 5, Mr. Jones on number seven, Mr. Jones... Mr. Davenport on number seven, Mr. Jones on number two, and Mrs. Wilson's disclosure on number five.
Okay, we'll now go to item number one, or is that Section 35169 to City Code regarding transient occupancy taxes? You had a speaker?
No.
This is speaker number one, please.
Transition taxes. I have Barbara Messner and another speaker, Your Honor.
Barbara? All speakers will have three minutes.
On the transient, which is air BNB, bed and breakfast, it's my understanding, you can correct me if I have any information incorrectly, that you would like to tax homeowners who rent their homes 8%, the same that you tax hotels, because this is cutting into the business of the hotel industry, which is probably at least $300 a night. You barely have enough staff to maintain, you know, the oceanfront and enough police to take care of the Sand Bridge homes who've been having problems since 2000. They had a lawsuit in 2000, you know, with problems because the police are down at the As far as funding, I'm going to drop off one of these things. This is from a website that someone else made. It's not mine, but we really don't have that much funding since, Mr. Sessoms, since you -- Mr. Sessions, since you took office in 2009, the poverty rate for individuals is up 28%. Poverty rate for children is up 19.8%. Poverty rate for elderly is up 46.9%. Average monthly residents receiving food stamp benefits up 77.9%. And students eligible for free or reduced lunches is up 24.4%. People have a right to make money. Are you gonna charge people taxes if they advertise on Craigslist or Angie's List? I just think if there are problems in the neighborhood and they're addressed, we won't have to tax the people or find them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Michael Armstrong.
We welcome you tonight.
Sir, my wife and I have had, we've just started in with the Airbnb thing. It's a more formal thing than what we've done before, which was usually family or friends. And then family and friends would refer. Somebody would come in and then they would say, well, why don't we give you a little bit of money for staying? And this has worked out well for us. And we looked into Airbnb, and we really liked the organization. And we realized that making money, we will pay the income tax, obviously, but there's also the question of the lodging tax. We have registered, which I mean, I guess that means we got our business license, so we will begin to pay the 8%. What we're looking for, we're hoping, is that this does not get totally squashed, because it seems like there are many people who are doing this. Some have come forward, some have not. So what we would like to see is some kind of fair way that we can talk about maybe some regulation and maybe some taxation, but that it can continue, because it seems to be a good thing for a lot of people.
Thank you very much for your comments. Any other speakers?
No, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Mayor, I would move that we would approve the ordinance as distributed to make those changes to our transit occupancy taxes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have adopted the ordinance for the transit occupancy taxes.
Item number two, ordinance to amend City Code section 10.1 regarding police cipher Creed's precinct at Oak Grove and B, change the boundary line between Red Wing and Oceana precincts. Speaker?
Barbara Messner. That's why I didn't call her a while ago, because she registered for the.
I spoke on both.
Do I have a motion for item two, A and B, please?
I move. Will you approve them?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have adopted the ordinance amending the code, both the change and the precincts.
Item number nine, B, fund balance of the police federal state seized assets fund for police equipment, vehicles, and construction. Speaker, please.
Barbara Messner.
And I want to give this. I really don't like coming here. I would like to see some of the candidates who are running read the agenda and come speak out, so people actually can know how they stand on things instead of their promises. But I do have a question on, and I absolutely am for funding air police fire and rescue, especially police. I've been speaking before different bodies since the 90s, when Bobby Matheson headed up the Police Benevolent. Okay, this is using the entire state and federal seized assets for police, equipment, vehicles, and construction. My only question is, is any of that construction, will it be to move the current police station, which has already been moved from closer to the oceanfront? Is any of that construction cost to move the police station again for the arena?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion for 9B?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the fund balance for the police federal.
I now go to item number seven, Virginia Gentleman Foundation, Inc., and City of Virginia Beach for a conditional use permit regarding forestry at 1181 Prosperity Road. We have speakers. And John, would you like to make clear what, that you've amended something, please?
We had heard from some members of the adjacent neighborhood that the ordinance that was advertising that we had in our packet did not exactly mirror what the motion was that was made at the planning commission. Specifically, the motion that was made and approved there was stated that the applicant shall stabilize and maintain the land in a pasture-like state that is acceptable to the planning department. And the applicant is fine with that as well. And so, I submitted this to everyone in the informal session. And so, certainly, I'd like for that to be the, the item for discussion.
Very good. Call the speakers, please.
RJ Nutter. RJ's representing the applicant, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's a pleasure to be here.
We welcome you.
Thank you very much, sir. Members of council recommend RJ Nutter representing part of the applicant. This, this has two applicants, as a matter of fact. The Virginia Gentleman Foundation is one of the applicants, but the City of Virginia Beach is also an applicant in this case. And that's significant, because quite frankly, when this era came to light, the city and my client agreed to sit down with the help of the mayor, and look at a way to resolve this openly and honestly. So, we agreed to file for this application. The city agreed to be a co-applicant with us, because they supported this, this application. And so, we're here today. We have since that time had a meeting with the neighborhood adjacent to us, and gone and, I did not attend, my clients attended and went to a long explanation about not just this, but the, what they're planning for the rest of the camp, with their progress and so forth, to keep them updated. So, all of that has occurred prior to coming here today. But notwithstanding that, I'm happy to have staff's recommendation approval, the planning commission's recommendation approval. And Mr. Earn, we agree with the conditions that you read. We, I let Mr. Whitlow know that earlier, that I didn't understand why it wasn't the conditions, but we had agreed to that and have no problem. Just a couple of points for you, though, about this. This is a real honor to represent this group. We, we have represented the Virginia Gentleman Foundation on a pro bono, pro bono basis for, I guess, close to five years now. All their incorporation's records, all the things they do with the city, the negotiations with the city on this, this arrangement that came to you when I used permit application in 2013. So, we're happy to do that. And frankly, many of the consultants and contractors have also donated their time either completely or agreed to do things at cost for this organization. It's a wonderful thing. They have, to date, raised $13.1 million in private donations and pledges. Not one of that is about any money from the city or the state. The city is participating, as you know, Mr. Mayor, by virtue of leasing the land to them for, for $1 a year, and we appreciate that. But this is truly a worldwide community effort throughout the state and throughout the rest of the world, where people are donating to this fund. Now, I would ask for this application, my clients, just so you know for the record, because many of you may not know the record. My clients hired a licensed contractor to clear this area in conjunction with other work they were doing at the camp. Well-known contractor. In fact, he agreed to donate his services and offered to pay us $4,000 as a contribution to the camp for the trees that were moved from the site. When this controversy occurred, we declined the $4,000. It wasn't worth taking it. So, it already cost this organization $4,000. But at any rate, they hired this gentleman, well-known person. He went down. Before he went to the city for the permits, he asked the inspector to meet him on-site to review the property. They then went, at some point, that day or the next day, down to the city, applied for all the permits that he was known to ask for. I myself, I went down to get a permit to add on something to my house. I'm not sure I would know. I would only have to rely on what the person on the other side of the counter was telling me was the appropriate application. So, they did all that, filed all those paperwork, proceeded to do the clearing. The clearing in this case, by the way, was restricted into the area where the, their next phase of development would be. So, it was not timbering. No one was going to timber a six-acre piece that regularly shaped in the middle of a forest. This was solely to accommodate the next phase of development. But at any rate, they did that, and that's when the complaint occurred. We then responded and are here today because we want to be part of the solution process, not part of the complaining process. So, we're happy with the conditions as they're proposed, Mr. Mayor. I would tell you a couple of things about the neighborhood, so you'll know, is that, just for your own purposes, this entire parcel is actually 132 acres in size. We are only leasing 69 of these acres. Of the 69 acres we're leasing, only 18 acres are developable at all. 12 acres is the first phase, which has already been cleared, is underway. And 6 acres is the phase two that was cleared, that's brought us here today. So, of that, 18 acres out of 132 acres, that's 86% of this entire property remains completely tree. The closest portion of the area that are tree, that we did take the trees down to, is approximately 300 feet from the closest property line in the neighborhood. So, it's a full football field away of trees, and that's the closest point to where this occurred. So, we thought we were doing everything right. And just as happens sometimes, we all find there's a problem after the fact. Rather than go through appeals to the BZI and the courts, we decided it was just better to come forward to you, request the use permit, and that's why we're here today. Billy Ennis is here, who's president of the organization. Happy to, he, I asked him to come to give you an update on the status of the project, so you'll know what's going on out there. We often get that question, so I thought it'd be an excellent time for you all to be brought up to speed on that as well. But, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions you or the council members might have.
Any questions, somebody? Thank you very much.
It was my pleasure, sir.
Next speaker, please.
Billy Ennis.
We welcome you tonight.
Captain, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Member of City Council. As RJ mentioned, I just wanted to give you all a quick update as to what's going on out of the site. If you've been out there lately, you've seen that construction is well underway, with nearly all the site work complete. The lake is finished, building pads are in place, and we actually have picnic pavilions that are going up right now, and the piers at the lake should be started in the next couple of weeks. Buildings will start next month, and we still plan to be ready to open for next summer. So, we're on track there. As Mr. Nutter mentioned, we have raised over $13 million on about a, excuse me, $16 million project budget. Our capital campaign is ongoing, as is our event-based fundraising. So, October 9th is JT Walk, mark your calendars. A lot of this fundraising success is due to overwhelming support throughout our community, friends, family, corporate donors, foundations, our military community, and of course, the City of Virginia Beach for the land lease, as well as being the co-applicant on his permit. And one of the reasons we're able to be so successful is bringing a lot of donors out to the site. They were encouraged to, once they saw the scale of the project and everything that's going on out there, it was a lot easier for someone in my position to make an ask for a donation to contribute to the project. And that was also, as we explained to the planning commission, that was part of our intent with clearing of phase two, was to get out there, see what we have. It's an irregularly shaped parcel of land. So, we wanted to get out, see what we had to work with, protect the area from encroaching wetlands, et cetera, and all of which has been explained. You know, as, as Mr. Nutter explained a minute ago, we went through this whole process thinking that we were doing everything above board. You know, we, we, I'm not a developer. I'm a fundraiser out here, and we went through the process as we saw fit and best we could, and including the multiple city inspectors and the Army Corps involvement out there as well. So, honestly, there's no malicious intent here. We're trying to do everything the right way. We've also met with the Birdneck Lake Civic League prior to the planning commission meeting, and I've agreed to and have provided monthly updates ongoing to the Civic League out there, just to make sure that everyone's on the same page, and we all know what's happening. So, we're out here, working hard, doing our best to give this pretty incredible camping experience to our wounded veterans, Gold Star families, and children with special needs and disabilities. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
John Coats.
We welcome you, sir.
Thank you. Never had the opportunity to address the council.
Well, it's a pleasure to have you here.
Good evening. My name is John Coats. I'm a homeowner in the Birdneck Lake subdivision, which is, you know, is adjacent to the campground project. I'm a retired Navy Civil Engineer, Civil Engineer Corps officer. I'm also a registered professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Virginia. Frank Capriglioni, who is also here this evening, co-authored the letter, which we submitted to you yesterday, which addressed recommendation number three. Frank is also a homeowner in Birdneck Lake, and he's a retired civil engineer and Class A contractor. As a Navy veteran, I truly appreciate the efforts of the Virginia Gentleman Foundation for the campground facility for people with special needs, including wounded warriors. As you're aware, approximately six acres of city-owned trees were clear-cut earlier this year in an area identified as phase two of the project. The trees are gone, and we accept that reality. However, we're now asking that the denuded, the denuded area be cleaned up in the very near future, as was discussed in the July 13th planning commission meeting. About 6:00 PM this evening, I saw a copy, a revised copy of the recommendations. Thank you for listening to us and incorporating appropriate additional language in recommendation three. The only additional thing we would ask is that a timeframe be assigned to that recommendation, so it doesn't drag on forever. If you've been by that site, it's, it truly is a mess. Have you seen from the photographs? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for coming down, and my daughter just moved to that neighborhood, so keep an eye out on her floor.
Scott Whitlow.
Scott, we welcome you tonight.
Mr. Mayor. Same response to Mr. Nutter. What they did out there certainly was timbering. It certainly was the harvesting of timber, because there's been no next phase of development proposed. There's been no site plan proposed. And the buffer, he was a little bit off. It's 150 feet from the Birdneck Lake property, not 300 feet. You know, Mr. Ennis said, well, we had to clear it to see what we have. They were able to pick that site, come up with the development for phase one, and do all that without having to clear the trees to see what they had. They have aerial photographs, tag trees, so I'm not sure. They had to cut all this down to see what they have. On page two of the written agenda item, it said the planning commission passed a motion to recommend approval of the request by a vote of 11 to 0 with the conditions listed below. And when I saw that yesterday, I was concerned because I knew that those conditions did not match what the planning condition, planning commission had imposed. For one thing, there were five of them, and the planning commission only imposed four. Looking at condition one, they did pass that condition, but there's been a sentence added to that at the end. At the planning commission, it ended with, "No other clearing on the site shall be permitted absent of a conditional use permit." And the planning commission specifically added that sentence. Someone has come along and added, "Said plan has been displayed to city council and is on file with the Planning and Community Development Department." This implies that if they want to do additional clearing in phase two, they don't have to come back to get a new conditional use permit. That is not accurate. That's why we're here tonight, to get them a conditional use permit. The, the site plan they have says phase two is subject to CU, CUP approval. That's what the staff report said for their existing use permit. So, and again, that last sentence was not part, a condition passed by the planning commission. It should be stricken. Other than that, I'll say that given the amendments that have been done to, to condition three, we are, you know, satisfied with the conditions. Although, just to echo Mr. Co, Mr. Coats, I see that there's no timeframe placed on this. And we are concerned that the stumps and the branches and the debris will stay out there for, for years, and we really don't want that, or we don't, don't really even want it for months. So, we would ask that some timeframe be imposed upon them for the condition three. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming down. Next speaker.
Mr. All the speakers, Your Honor.
Mr. Earn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there, I guess, Bill, Mr. Ennis or Mr. Nutter, is, first off, do you, when, when do you plan on having the site? I imagine it would be short term. I think it's kind of been held up as we waited to get through this process, but...
Exactly. They told me they have to apply for the permit, to make sure we didn't apply for permit here. And then, they were thinking within, inside about 90 days. I, I might suggest 120, just in case it's wrong. They're not trying to hold this out. They want to move.
Would your client be okay with adding 180 days as?
We'd be 120.
120?
Twenty, yes, sir. We'd apply.
Okay.
Very good.
All right. And is there any additional clearing that's, that has not already been done?
No, sir.
Do you, do you object to striking that last sentence?
I don't mind. It's, I would tell you, it's a normal staff sentence. They just attached the site plan, but we don't care if they strike the sentence.
Mr. Frankenfield, do you feel comfortable with that sentence, or is it?
We don't, if they want to remove it, that's fine.
Is, is there a reason for it being in there? Is, is just so it's identifying the actual plan?
That's what we're trying to do.
Okay, well, then...
It doesn't matter us either way, but I would like to point out, certainly, we'd like the 100 maybe days, or whatever you want to do, but since we are requiring an erosion sediment control plan, I would like to make it that time from the time the erosion sediment control plan is approved.
Okay, so 120 days from the time the erosion sediment plan is approved. And we'd, we'd add that under number... And we'd add that under number...
Three.
Three? Yeah, we just add it to number 3.
Are you removing that sentence?
Is that all right with you, Mr. Stiles?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, to, my motion would be to strike the last sentence under number 1, starting with said plan, and then make the addition for the timeframe for the clearing to be, or not the clearing, but the restoration of the site to happen. And with those two changes to my original motion, I would move that we would accept that.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, or any discussion, Mr. Moore?
One, what is the timeframe, since we made one a precondition erosion sediment plan, but just to avoid any ambiguity? What's the timeframe of that?
Typically, it would be about 30 days, but I don't know how long it's going to take for them to get the plan to submit. So we will certainly pay every bit of attention to it and move it through as fast as possible. Thank you very much.
Any other questions or comments? Call for the question, please.
By vote of 10 to 0, Mr. Davenport abstaining. You have approved the application with the two changes.
Item number 9, City of Virginia Beach, ordinance to adopt the 2016 outdoors plan as a component of the comprehensive plan. It's our future, our choice city. B, ordinance to amend Sections 101, 16, excuse me, 1601, 1603, and 1605 of the coastal primary sand dunes zoning ordinance pertaining to definition of a sand management permit, the fee, and the placement of signs for such permit. Call the speakers.
There are no speakers, Your Honor. I thought that was done under...
We already passed that.
I made a mistake. How about that?
I don't believe it was read as part of the consent agenda.
It wasn't read.
It wasn't read.
It wasn't. Okay. And I've been up since 3 o'clock this morning. Okay. Do I have a motion for 9A and B?
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the question, please. I am going to turn over the appointments to you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Correct?
By vote of 11 to 0, you have approved the...
Not now.
You don't have to now.
I don't have a clue, because I don't know.
You don't, you don't have to turn it over on this, because the only item...
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor, any recommendations on appointments?
Yes. I'd like to nominate, if I may, to the Online Home Sharing Economy Ad Hoc Committee as chairman, Jack Thrasher.
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 Thrasher. Ed Denton, members, Ed Denton, Mike Kelly, Betsy Atkinson, Bruce Johnson, Tim Solonic, Heidi Daniels, Sandy Granger, Larry Stamp, Bill Brown, and Robert Taylor.
Robert who?
Taylor. Do you have any other nominations? Here, none, I'll call for the question, please.
By vote of 11 to 0, you have appointed the online committee for the ad hoc.
Is there any unfinished business? Is there any due business? Will adjourned?
Thank you all.